The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
We're on the numero eight. If we could hold that off until after our discussion of land acquisition in executive session, I think that might be prudent, just the ordering of that.
Okay, do we have any rest? I've had any problem with holding that off until our loan acquisition in our executive session.
And then the other thing, under letter H, number one, sanitation department and I appreciate the information, the written information, but rather than having a formal report here this evening, since we have a task force committee, whatever we're calling it, on this particular subject, that we'll hear this again, probably in greater detail, if we could just hold off on a verbal presentation, just everybody look at it and understand, and we'll deal with that.
You're talking about in reference to shared, given a report on it, you'd like to hear just to hold off on that if you wouldn't.
Yeah, just thank you for the information that's in the packet, valuable information, but rather than giving a formal report.
You have a problem with that? No, we should be talking, we have to be on that.
Right.
Okay. Any other items or suggestions?
Mr. Mayor, under mayor's business, item seven, you have under the new agenda, the authorization to advertise for city planner positions. If we can also, as part of that discussion, have just a placeholder to talk about a work session to review Mr. Ronald's recommendations for the building plan and code department, as well as the implementation orders.
What we've got is the day of an adaptation.
Yes, sir, but just as opposed to doing it in a board meeting and give the shortest amount of time, requesting that we just have a work session.
Or do you have a time frame of work session? Would you think about that, as we go through the agenda, maybe make recommendations?
Yes.
Any other comments? With those corrections, do we have an approval of the official agenda?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, that we approve the official agenda. All those agreeable to that, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes. Brings us down to comments by the mayor and the board. And I have a proclamation to read pertaining to municipal clerks week, that's April the 30th through May the 6th. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, running equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continuously strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Robert Daniel Camp, Mayor of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, do recognize the week of April 30th through May 6th, 2006, as municipal clerks week, and further extend appreciation to a municipal clerk, Marquita Ayo Outlaw, and to all municipal clerks for their vital service there. They perform in a exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Mayor Dan Robert B. Camp. We have one other thing tonight that I would like to bring to the board's attention is that our fire chief has been asked, and today he will need approval from the board to serve on this, to chair a committee with the aid of a technical support expert from the International Association of Fire Chiefs to write an operational guide for deployment resources for the statewide emergency response plan for the state of Mississippi. Chief, where are you, in here tonight?
Yep.
Congratulations on being asked to be part of that board, and I feel comfortable that this board will make its approval for you to be part of that.
Thank you.
This is just another honor that comes to our fire department. Again, we've got a great fire department. We know that throughout the United States, have one of the best fire departments for a city our size in the United States. And Marquita, congratulations to you as well in order, as well.
Just as a reminder, and to give everyone an opportunity to tune up their bicycles, between now and the 19th, May 19th is bike to work day, and Starkville Motion will be hosting a ride on that day, and more details will be coming out in your local paper. Wanted to give everyone, especially on the board, an opportunity to tune up their bicycles the other couple weeks, May 19th is the date.
We would like to welcome our vice mayor, Mr. Perkins, back tonight. We've missed him. He's been gone for several meetings, and he looks great. As a matter of fact, yesterday at the funeral, I looked back and I thought it was your son. That I said, gosh, he was looking so young.
Yes, sir.
So again, tonight, we appreciate you joining us, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, are you going to do a motion for the chief to serve?
Yes. Do I have a motion for the chief to serve on this International Association of Fire Chiefs Committee?
I would move that the fire chief be authorized to serve on the task force for in our state neutral aid agreement, under the auspices of the International Fire Chiefs Association. Chief, will there be any expenses in connection with that from the city side?
No, sir, other than in time off, and I can use my own time if necessary, but I've received a $5,000 grant to go along with this chair and this committee, so it should cover our technical support expert plus all the expenses that were in.
And that he be granted time off from city duties to participate in this activity?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. I think all of you have heard Mr. Max's motion here. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, chief, you've gotten your board approval.
Thank you.
This brings us down for approval.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave that, in terms of general comments, in terms of recognition, everyone noticed in the paper today are very recently the retirement of Assistant Superintendent Dr. Janet Henderson from the Starkville School District after 36 years, I believe, service. And of course, we would like to take note of that retirement and commend her for her service to the youth of our community.
I don't think they're hearing her reception.
Reception is going on as we are here, and of course, we do want to get it.
Thank you. I remember the reception, I'm saying that, we appreciate those words. It brings us down for approval of minutes for March the 21st.
Earlier today, I gave Ms. Tyndall some corrections on those minutes, and I don't know if she's had time to pass them back out to all of you. Rather than enumerate them here at the table, can we put these off until next meeting so that everybody can see them on paper, all that good stuff, as per previous board order?
All right. Brings us down to service and comments. Alvin, how you doing tonight?
Doing pretty good. Going to the mayor and the board, um, that we were glad to have the time for, on yesterday to, we'll consider of alcohol on Sunday, and we hope that we say something that will We don't need no more problems than we already have. We only have 47, 20 in office, and if we go 24/7, we have way more problems than what we got now. And we're just hoping that, hopefully that they don't come up with legalized drugs next. That we want to try to be up here together and do the best we can with what is already going on. Those are some concerns of us.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak their mind at this time?
Hello, my name's Whitney Hilton, and I would like to thank the board, Mr. Mayor, for funding the disability. I've been working with Matt Hopps for a few months, and I'm thrilled that the city's going to have a partnership with the Corps of Deaf who helps them become more accessible, not only for the people who are disabled, but also for their families and friends, because it touches everyone, and help make Starkville a better retirement community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't think we have any organized public appearances tonight, so this will bring us down to, we put the planners into a work session, which brings us down to the board business, and the first thing has been put into executive session.
I'm sorry, I may have stated that incorrectly. We still need to approve authorization to advertise. I was suggesting that within the next two weeks, that we have an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Ronald.
Go through his proposal.
His recommendations.
All right. So do we have a motion to authorize approval to advertise for a planner?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to authorize to advertise for a planner. All of you have heard the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes, it does, it brings us down now, we put the authorization commission appraisal into executive session. You have some appointments for the Starkville Housing Authority, museum, the library, and the board, and the disability commission. I think you got one other person that was added late on there, is that not right, and that's Christine Fletcher.
Yes, sir.
Did all of you get her? She was kind of a little out of set, so she came in late. She would be a good addition to it because she's psyched and had, and has had previous experience, I think, with AZA. What? I'm sorry, you said what was on the table?
It was a mail, and it was a question box.
But I think under the housing authority, we had one application, and outstanding one of that, and I'd move that we appoint Larry Cohen to the housing authority, under the term, under the term.
Question?
Second. Have a motion, a second, that we appoint Larry Cohen is on the housing authority. All those in favor, say aye.
For the heritage museum, there's one spot, one applicant, Ms. Mary Lee Beal.
Yeah.
A former member of this board and body, it'd be my pleasure to make the motion and nominate, or to appoint Ms. Beal.
It's my pleasure to say.
All of you have heard the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes.
If I can skip the library board, go to the disability commission. We had many talented individuals who applied to the commission, and I think we're all impressed with the quality and dedication that there had. Unfortunately, we only had five spots available for this commission, and I would move that, and then we also further broke down, we wanted to establish staggered terms. We have three members to be appointed to four-year terms, and two members to be appointed to two-year terms, and I would move that we appoint effective June 2006, to the four-year terms, Ms. Whitney Hilton, Christine Fletcher, and Gary McFadden, and to the two-year terms, Susan Madison and Chris Duro.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, we appoint those individuals to the disability commission with the four-year terms and the two-year terms. All of you heard the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes.
This is Ms. Kitty Lee. We had originally appointed, you had originally appointed her to the museum board.
Museum board, right.
But what we had was, she was just wanting to serve on the board, and so we selected the museum board, and then very shortly after that, Ms. Beal came up and wanted to specifically serve on the museum board, so we were requesting the board transfer Ms. Lee to the library board. So she was wanting to serve, she just, we just arbitrarily selected the board for her serve on. So the request is that the board appoint Ms. Lee to the library board, and let Ms. Beal stand on the museum board.
This is agreeable with her?
Yes, it is. She was kind enough to say she'd make that switch.
You have a motion?
I would move Ms. Kitty Lee then be appointed to the library board, Starkville, Pibbell County Library Board for the term under consideration, and that she be removed from the museum board list directly.
You have a second?
Second.
All of you have heard the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes. Brings us down, all of us, we spent $300 in order to advertise on Miss Mississippi pageant or something, I think this is your idea, maybe?
Alden McCory is going to handle this.
Okay, good.
You should have received in front of you a sort of a template for an ad to be taken out in the Miss Mississippi pageant. It just would be a really excellent chance for us to show support for one of our own who is competing in the pageant. And that said, I would like to authorize the city of Starkville, or motion that we authorize the city of Starkville to advertise, by taking out a full-page ad in the Miss Mississippi pageant, so that we can advertise the resources and opportunities available in Starkville, and that because payment needs to be received by Friday, the payment be issued by Friday, May 5th.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All of you have heard the motion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, next item is fuel consumption status, Ms. Brule.
Fuel consumption status, yes. We want to report the board that requested. In front of you, you should have, these were, these were later on into the packet because we run into the end of the month numbers, so we got them on Monday, and they should be in front of you now. You'll see the citywide usage, and then it's broken down to the electric, the fire, police, sanitation, streets, and then the template for the other, for the other numbers. Essentially, we are a little bit above the target, which is 12, 739, we're at 13, 137. We have, I've asked a couple of different times on some of the trends there, we're still waiting to get, once we get the month of May, we'll have an annual that we can, we can begin to look one month to the next, and see exactly what we did this year versus last year. As it stands right now, our fire numbers are up a little bit from the lower point, well, they're actually quite a bit from the lowest point. Essentially, the chief has said that they are doing some training now that will reflect, that's reflected in the increased consumption. Police is up because we're spending a lot of time taking our prisoners out to other jails, because our jails are full. I think Webster County is getting a large number, so we're making regular runs, if not daily runs. And we also have some new personnel who are now not, who are riding or using the cars themselves, as opposed to being in training and are out on their own. Sanitation is down a little bit, and streets is up and down, and up and down, and I'm still asking Mr. Webb exactly why we have this up, down, up, down arrangement, and he hasn't gotten back to me with that. I don't know if we'll be able to make that distinction here, but maybe after a year, we'll have a better, better handle on it. We've looked at the prices, I've provided you with the highest price that we've paid, which was right at the Katrina timeframe, what we're currently paying now, and I would anticipate forty years out, we'll be right back at the Katrina level. So I've asked the department heads to all take a look at what other things we can do, or keep a constant look on what we can do to keep our consumption down. Obviously, the things we did during Katrina, in some measure, will keep, we've been doing all along. Some of the other things that we absolutely did sort of critical mode, we pulled back on a little bit, but we're now relooking at it, so we continue keeping on. Questions? Any other information the board would like to see in this monthly report?
Thank you. Report from the budget committee?
We met on Friday, and unfortunately, due to a death in the family, this alderman himself wasn't able to attend, so we abbreviated our agenda. We heard from Brickley Miller at the Horse Park, and she presented a very strong presentation talking about the continued, the continued increase in numbers of visitors coming from out of town, out of state, visiting our community for events associated with the Horse Park. We had a good conversation talking about continued funding needs that they had, and just wanted to let y'all know that we started to explore a thought of funding the city's contribution, not from the general fund as we've done in the past, but potentially to consider 2% tax money, because this is an economic development issue. As I mentioned before, we didn't have a full committee, and we certainly don't have a recommendation, but we wanted to alert you that that was part of that conversation, and as we go through the months leading up to the budget, that we can, as a board, make that decision. We did review some sales tax information, and just to share with you, for the first seven months into the budget year, we have some good news. We're at 13% over the same period last year. Of course, it's the real numbers that make a difference, and we're over $225,000 in additional revenue that has come in from the sales tax over what we had budgeted. And that's obviously good news. Same with the 2% tax over the same seven-month period of our budget year, we're up 9%. And we all see that in full restaurants and full stores, but it really makes a difference because our, our city itself is funded in large part due to sales tax. The bad news, though, that we were presented with is that insurance cost, much like all of us as individuals, has gone up for the city as well. We currently spend about $90,000 on, on providing insurance to, to the city employees, and we were presented a 22% increase for the same amount of coverage. And we'll be evaluating as a board whether or not to accept that coverage, or if we should consider options, and in other words, changes to the deductibles. But that 22% increase results in about a $20,000 budgetary impact that would hit starting in, in June, so it's something that we'll consider, and I know that the mayor and Lynn have been working very hard on to consider those options, and be presented at the next quarter.
Thank you. Departmental business, airport, rocking Lincoln here.
Yes, he is. Can you do that? Mr. Mayor, board, we have for presentation, like, a, a handsome amount of $30,205 on the airport improvement project under 32800680102005 improvements to Georgian Prime Field Municipal Airport, and this gets us to, according to the project engineer, 75%, 75% project completion, and the airport board and highest liaison would recommend approval to pass. If there are any form of motion, that is a lawful motion.
Do we have a second to his motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All of you have heard the request, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I think it passes. Office to city clerk.
Mayor, board, I have the financials for March 2006, and the claims document for April 2006. And on the claims document, I do have an addition to it, which is one invoice that was left on for $31,003.6 to Logan Triangle Regional Solid Waste, and it is the active monthly bill that we need to add to the claims document. I want to be best to prove it.
On the recommendation of the city clerk, can we have approval of the claims document?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second, we approve the claims document, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you.
Will that include the financials also? Really, it's just a informational purpose of the financials.
Thank you. Waiter Department, Ed, are you here?
I have four items for its authorization. First item is request authorization for the mayor to sign, excuse me, an agreement with the Tennessee Valley Authority for a SAS 70 audit. Brief background is TBA has, by act of Congress, has been brought under the General Accounting Office, and as a part of that, they come under the Sarbanes-Oxley Act of 2002. What this actually does is create some more stringent accounting practice, and more controls over the normal day-to-day activities and duties of the utility. In order for TBA to do this, they feel as though that all of their distributors should be on the same platform as they are, and so they're asking each distributor to actually conduct the same, have the same audit, and all conduct it for them as what TBA would have. This agreement actually stipulates as to what TBA is requiring with the Sarbanes-Oxley Act, and they're, and they're stating that they will pay for that audit. This will be an ongoing audit each year, in addition to the normal municipal audit that we have.
Do we have a motion to approve the audit?
I would move that the board authorize entering into the agreement with the Tennessee Valley Authority to conduct the internal audit of which Ms. Haddaway described, and the mayor be, excuse me, authorized to execute the document on behalf of the city.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You've heard the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes.
Second item, mayor and board, it's a request authorization for the mayor to sign a contract with Southeastern Data Corporation, who were the low bidders for the maintenance and operation of our, of our customer information system. We feel like that this is a good contract, and we would request that the board will allow the mayor to sign this contract, so that we can actually start the process of getting on schedule to start making this change. getting on schedule to start making this change, my present agenda.
Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the service contract with Southeastern Data Corporation.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All of you heard what he's requesting. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Passes. Your next item, please.
I would request authorization for the mayor to sign a certificate of final acceptance for this construction work that we had done, actually putting on a new theater circuit to the research park. And with the signing of this, this will allow us to close out this report procedure.
Do we have a motion for this request?
Second.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Your next item, please.
I would request that the board allow us to write off our bad debts from the year 2004. You should have a complete listing of all of those bad debts and what happened with these. Even though we use the term write off, it's not that this actually is written off. Put these into a holding account, and they're turned over to a collection agency for processing. And I would request that we authorize to do so.
Do we have a motion to carry this authorization to the next level?
This is a standard accounting practice of the elected department, so I would move that the list of bad debts for 2004 be written off from an accounting standpoint, but that collection continue of the list of accounts that are deleted.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Engineering and Streets?
Mayor and Board, I have one item. Request permission to authorize for equipment operator and two labors to fill vacant positions in the street department. This would be beginning level. We recently had one of our older equipment operators have to go out on medical disability bad health. We'd like to fill his position and two labor maintenance worker one position.
You've heard the request. Do we have a motion?
We authorize advertisement of the three vacant positions in the street department, the equipment operating position and the two vacant labor position.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Webb. Fire Department?
Mayor and Board, I have three items tonight. The first one is we've been invited to participate in the Combat Challenge, and I would ask permission that we be able to send six firefighters to the reservoir fire department for competition that would qualify us on the national level.
I got a question. Are you going to win?
We're planning on it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed? It passes. Your next item, please.
Next one is permission for my minimum sergeant assistant, LaShonda Reeves, to travel to the National Fire Academy for a national incident reporting system that we do that qualifies us for grant. It's a two-week course. No cost to the city for the course or travel fees, flight, or anything. We just have to pay for a meal ticket once you've gone.
You've heard the request. Do we have a motion?
He's going to be able to get by without two?
I don't know about that, ma'am. Everything will be done before she leaves.
I would move that LaShonda Reeves be authorized to attend the National Fire Academy's session on national fire incident reporting and program management, August 7, 2006 to August 18, 2006, and that the city pay for her meals up to, of course, the state-approved limit during that period of time.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed? Your next item, please.
The last one is permission to purchase 15 sets of turnout gear. This is our ongoing rotational plan of buying 15 sets every year that keeps us from buying 60 at a time. It comes from the source of supply bid, which we send out each year, and 15 sets of gear from Profire Equipment is $5,882.25. This is a budgeted item.
Do we have a motion for this approval?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Police Department?
Mayor and Board, request authorization out of Level 1 to enter into a lease agreement with Synergetics Property. This is for office space for narcotics. We're renting downtown in greater structural development partnership on our building and has started renovating and then they dispose.
You see the request. Do we have a motion for this request?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It passes. Next item, please.
Request authorization to allow Officer Henry Stewart to take six credit hours at East Pacific Community College, and this is within the city policy and contains the reimbursement of educational courses, and it is a budgeted item.
You hear the request. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Next item.
Request authorization to hire two radio operators in the two slots that are currently vacant, and they are budgeted.
Chief, let me ask you a question about this item. I understand that the two radio operators are being quit because you're having to replace these two debt factors.
Yes, sir. I'm having to replace one and just resigned to start her own business with her husband, and then there was another position that I've held up some months that I'm going to go ahead and fill because I'm getting behind some of the duties that that would require.
Okay. Let me ask you this. You know, this came up several months ago, about possibility of combining the city and the county communication system. I don't know at all that this would affect a combination of the two, but we have not heard back from the request that was made to you to give with Mr. Britt and come back and give us an opinion of where we really would be justified in combining the two communications. But in the event it was supposed to save the city $50,000 if we could combine it, would you please give with Mr. Britt in the future and give us a report back at the next board meeting of how this is coming on, what the status of the county, as far as them being willing to combine the two, and what it takes for us to combine them in the event that we decided we really wanted to combine the two communications systems. I so moved that we make a motion to hire the two full-time radio operators that the chief is requesting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed? Public Services?
Mayor and Board, construction season's here, and it's time to get down on the business of running fire protection to some of the 1998 annexed areas. When you came in tonight, you had bid tabulations for pipe, pipe prices that we opened today. The 12-inch and the 8-inch pipe you see on the bid tabulation is required to bring fire protection to the Old Highway 12, Pine Press Road, Highway 12, and Arbor Drive area. When we went out for bid a month or so ago, we went ahead and included in the bid request the 10-inch pipe needed to run fire protection down to the Deerfield area on Old Highway 12. Our plans were, as of today, to get a read from the pipe suppliers of the forecast for pipe prices for the remainder of the year, and all indications are that pipe prices are going to continue to rise the rest of the year and possibly beyond. So with that, I would like to also include the 10-inch pipe in my request of purchase. This puts us about $83,000 over the budget for that line item, but as I explained in my cover letter, when the audit was done, the final audit results for the enterprise fund were done, it was discovered that the beginning cash balance had been understated by about $720,000. So we have the cash to do this, and I think we need to go ahead and do it and get these two projects underway and get it completed this year. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Do we have a motion on his request? Trying to beat the oil prices, I guess.
Yes, sir.
I heard there's more than $80 or $100 a gallon in the bear oil.
And then the, you'll see in bold on this cover letter that I put at your places, that's the amount the supplier is requesting approval to purchase the pipe.
All these different sizes, Doug, were bid as a complete package?
Yeah, they were bid as a complete package, but if we leave the 6-inch off, they'll still honor the prices for the 8-inch. And the figures in the smaller bunch in the bid amount column are the, is the amount excluding the 6-inch pipe.
I would move then that we authorize the purchase of 8-inch, 10-inch, and 12-inch water pipe from the lowest and best bid, that being Central Pipe and Supply out of Pearl in the amount of $198,590.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All of you have heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Next item, please.
Thank you. Late Friday afternoon, Ms. Gandy discovered that she has made an error on the tabulation for the best bid for the scrap water meters, and she placed a revised bid tabulation in the packet. So the one that I attached to my cover sheet is no longer valid. So if you have one that shows TE Glover as the best bid, that is the correct sheet. And with that, I would like to see board approval to sell these scrap water meters to TE Glover for a total amount of $5,023.
Do we have a motion for this request?
I would move that we accept the bid of TE Glover?
Yes, sir.
From West Blockton, Alabama, in the amount of $5,023 for the various surplus properties, water meters from the water department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All of you have heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Next item, please.
Okay, the next item is our Azalea Lane tank. As you probably noticed, next park, park and rec is coming online, and requesting approval tonight to add this tank to our annual maintenance contract that we have with all our other tanks in the city with Utility Service Company. I've kind of explained a little bit of the justification of using Utility Services. They're a very good provider of this service. Also, they have a subsidiary that leases the cell towers and acts as our agent in leasing the cell towers on top of the, on top of the tanks. This is a, creates a good situation for us because a lot of times when these cell tower people get up there and do maintenance on their antennas, they'll nick some things and gouge some things, and then it ends up in a finger-pointing session between another tank maintenance provider and a different cell tower leasing agent. So it really has worked out well for us, and with that, I would recommend that we delegate any of this tank for a service contract.
We have an existing service contract with Utility Service Company covering the remainder of the business?
Yes, sir.
And do you recall its term?
They're all cancelable within 90 days written notice.
But I'm assuming it was an item that was bid earlier, the maintenance contract with Utility Service Company?
Bill, you remember what it was bid?
Well, they gave us a seven-year plan. It was led as a professional service. We recently started out the seven-year plan and rolled over. They're one of the few companies that does both of these items that we're talking about.
Bill, my, this is a little, kind of what I answered as well. The seven-year ends when, Bill, do you recall?
I think it is already the end, and we are in the roll over period now. I'd have to go back and check.
Just an automatic roll over. Any reason why we didn't bid this to see what sort of prices would be out there is the provision of this type of service area limited?
At that time, they were, it was limited, and they, we contacted different tank companies to get their, if they were interested in, and this was the only one at that time that was interested in. And the thing about this is that once they get in a cycle, they gave us a seven-year cycle, and during that seven years, each tank would be, we would pay you a monthly fee, I think it's $25, $26, we'll start out there. And that included a washout every year, actually a sandblasting and painting every four or five years. And in order to get your money's worth, you had to, you had to, continue for more than seven years because of the phases in which they do things. And then they formed this company that's to market the tanks for cell towers, and those companies being together, it certainly is pretty profitable to us. I think we got $130,000 this past year for marketing those tanks, or for the lease on those tanks. But it also is to create, solve a lot of conflicts if you were to, if Al South would go up on one of their tanks and do some work and scratch something or tear something up, then you got two different contractors fighting each other. We thought that this would be the best way to go.
How long does the roll over period last?
I can't even, I have to research it, go back to the contract.
Is this a critical matter at this moment?
Certainly table it until we.
I'd recommend that we table this particular item to check out some angles relative to this contract. Does it cause any problems?
Yeah, we'll be okay. Then the last item is I'd like your approval to advertise to fill a vacant operator two position at the wastewater treatment plant. We have two vacancies down there, and a lot of people, three left down there are going to be retiring on us pretty soon. We need to, we need to get some young people in there and try to develop them and mentor them and bring them along and to fill some of these vacant positions. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You want authorization, I have to talk to just one position? Just one position?
Yeah, right now, we, the chief wastewater operator, we advertised back there, but our starting salary is too low, and we didn't get any happiness. So until we get that salary issue resolved, and I'd rather wait until we do that before we advertise.
I move approval to advertise for a vacant operator two position at the wastewater treatment I move approval to advertise for a vacant operator two position at the wastewater treatment plant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sanitation?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm requesting authorization to purchase one real loading, front loading, 40-yard garbage truck in the amount of $164,550.60. I'm also requesting to hold off the person 32-yard, cubic real loading truck.
So you're requesting with the purchase of one truck? You've heard the request. Do we have a motion?
Is it replacing one that we have?
It's, both of them would be replacing, two of them that we have, but they're not running.
They're not running?
No, sir.
And what we're doing right now, if they're not running, how are we handling the garbage?
We're handling a lot of overtime on our mills. The sanitation department on our real loading, that's why I want to continue, we can handle that. But commercially, we cannot at this time.
How long have these trucks been down?
How long have they been there?
Yeah.
It hasn't been that long. They've been around, I have trucks that have lasted me for 10 years because the maintenance has been too long.
They're 15 years old?
Not 15 years. They've been old, it's about, between five is a year-long lifetime of a truck, garbage truck. We've had the majority of ours for 10 years. And it's time to get them completed. With the real loading, I said I'm going to hold off on that one. With the 40-yard, we have one, just only two trucks running right now. Supposedly two, three trucks out on the commercial route. There's only two.
Right now, the only you can get back with a 40-yard front loading garbage truck?
No, that's the one that we need. Yes, sir.
And that's the Ingram Equipment bid is what I stand best.
I make a motion. We authorize the purchase of a 40-yard front loading garbage truck. We're only $3,502.
It's on 100 and See, it's 160.
Probably the lowest and best bidder in Ingram Equipment. Is that part of the motion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second that we purchased a garbage truck for 164,000. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed, next item, please.
Next item I have on here, I would like to transfer in number four, item number four before we take on number three. I recommend hiring a laborer to a driver's position. It's basically a transfer of an employee, Kerry D. Williamsworth. He's replaced by a driver, again, who is present at driving foreman. And I'm sure the fiscal business is for you. You have the code here in your packets, his record, driving record, criminal record. And you also have copy, front copy of his application.
Do we have a motion for this request? Do we have a second? We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of this request, please, of this motion, please say aye. All those opposed, passes.
I respectfully request to hire the hiring of two laborers. One's to replace, transfer of Kerry Williamsworth, who was hired 12/27/05 as a laborer and is a part of the driver. The other's to replace James Wicks, a laborer who had been out of work for the truck and the board's approval would terminate him.
Do we have a motion for this request?
I saw also having through this, both of them, we did a criminal background check and the application. We both have, drive family.
I move that we hire Kerry Crane and Sergio Allen as laborers with budget amount of $14,952.30 each.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for this request. We have a motion for this request. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, it passes. Thank you, ma'am. This brings us down to a discussion for the executive session.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss need for executive session, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to go into closed session, discuss going into executive session. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?